Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see everyone and welcome to our May meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Devin Houchen? Mike Houchen?
Here.
Letitia?
Here.
Beverly Ford?
Here.
Steve Pegg?
Here.
Denny Doyle?
Here.
Okay, thank you. If you've had time to look at the minutes, we had a regular meeting and we also had a call meeting. We can entertain a motion to approve both of those when you're ready. I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Our financials, please.
Restaurant tax, fifty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Transit room tax was two and forty thousand six hundred seventy dollars and forty-nine cents. And transfer to tourism, eighty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Cash analysis for April, investments, ninety-five thousand five hundred forty-one dollars. Twenty-nine thousand six oh one in fire department checking. One thousand one hundred fifty-three in fire department savings. With five thousand one hundred eighty dollars in police savings.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a special guest with us, uh, tonight. Uh, Ms. Helena Bernwell, Baren County Clerk. And she's gonna tell us everything we need to know about voting and registration and everything.
Okay, well, I don't consider myself special, but it's always awesome to be here with y'all here in, in K-City. And I hate that, um, my job keeps me over in Glasgow so much more and don't get to be here as often as I would like to. But it's great to be here and thanks for the opportunity to, uh, speak tonight, um, regarding voting. So as you all know, the primary election is coming up in Kentucky, uh, Tuesday, May seventeenth. So, a week from tomorrow, we're gonna have an election. Has anybody heard anything about an election coming up? Yeah.
No.
No. The mayor hasn't heard about it. So, um, here in Baren County, we're gonna have four voting centers. Um, sorry, my husband is calling me. I think he forgot that I have things to do, so I apologize for that distraction. Uh, we have four voting centers in Baren County this election. Um, for this primary, we're gonna be changing that a little bit for the general, and I'll talk about that one second. But the four locations, you can go to any one of these four locations, no matter if you live in K-City or if you live in Austin. You can go anywhere you wanna go and vote at one of these four locations. K-City Convention Center, so y'all are pretty lucky over here in K-City. Um, Baren County High School gym, Haywood Volunteer Fire Department, and Austin Tracy Volunteer Fire Department. Now, after this plan was set in place and approved by the, the, I mean, the local board elections approved this plan, then we had to send it off to the state to get approved, about, I don't know, two weeks ago, I started getting lots of complaints. I was like, why did anybody tell me? No one told me that this was a major crisis in Baren County. Because we used this model in 2020 when we did the presidential election. We only had three voting centers. And everyone loved it. You don't stand in line. We actually voted eleven thousand people early through the county clerk's office. And if y'all ever been to the clerk's office and worked on the square, you know that's like crazy. So eleven thousand people came through, voted early, folks went and voted in our three locations. No one complained, but now folks are upset. So, we are doing our best to make some modifications for the general election, which won't be until November. So everybody just bear with me and get through this primary, vote at one of these four locations or vote early. And I'm gonna tell you about those options. But in the general election, we're looking at adding a voting center in, um, High School and Park City, Ronnie, Park City, and Temple Hill. Okay, so hopefully that will help, um, keep folks happy. Let's talk about early, early voting. So it's already past time to do a mail-in ballot. So we've got those. We have about a hundred and fifty mail-in ballot requests. That's very normal for this type of election, okay? Um, we're looking at no more than seven thousand voters turning out. And that's low, so I would love to see lots more. So, um, encourage people to still vote. So, uh, mail-in ballot request is already passed, but right now going on at the clerk's office, we have early voting. Um, and it's called excused early voting. The state has changed everything, y'all, so lots of confusion. But for six days, anyone that has an excused reason, like you're gonna be out of town, you're elderly, you're disabled, you're a college student, you're in military, one of those type of reasons, you can come to the clerk's office right now during our open hours, eight to four-thirty, and vote in person at the clerk's office, okay? But, super awesome opportunity coming up this week, May twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, from eight to four-thirty, eight to four-thirty. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this week, we're gonna be out at the Baren County Extension Office. And anyone that's a registered voter in Baren County that would like to come out and vote, you don't have to have a reason, just come vote with us, okay? So, um, no excuse, anyone that wants to vote early, you're eligible to come out. It doesn't matter where you live or, or how you're registered, you can come and vote early. And we'll have all the ballots available at the Baren County Extension Office, eight to four-thirty, Thursday, Friday, Saturday this week. So that's Saturday, y'all, eight to four-thirty on a Saturday. So there's really no reason for anyone to be upset about opportunities to vote in Baren County. We got lots of reasons for you. And lots of reasons, lots of availability for you too. Okay, so, um, then of course, six AM to six PM, May seventeenth, for the folks over here in K-City, uh, you're welcome to go to Convention Center or any one of the other locations we talked about. If you have questions or if you, I sometimes talk a little bit fast. So if you didn't catch it all, you're welcome to call me at the office, two-seven-oh-six-five-one-three-seven-eight-three. Check us out on our Facebook, Baren County Clerk, or our website, uh, barencountyclerk.com. Where, where, our website has tons of information on there. And I know these local candidates have worked super hard. That's what I, I take it really, really, really personal. Because I know as a local candidate myself, um, we put a lot of, of blood, sweat, and tears into campaigning. So we want voters to turn out and vote for us. That's how we win. Yeah. So, please go and vote for these folks that have worked so hard, um, to earn your, um, earn your vote. And don't let, uh, not having your local precincts, you know, typically we'd have twenty-five precincts in Baren County. Now we're down to voting centers. Don't let that be the reason you don't vote. I, I give my, my hard speech of, you know, too many men and women have fought and died for our freedoms here in America. And so many people would give anything to be a U.S. citizen and have the rights that we have. So let's take those rights and, um, and go vote, okay? Let's do that for those folks. So any questions that I can answer for y'all? Um, I will say, if you're over here in K-City and you're interested in running for K-City Council or Mayor, uh, June the seventh at four PM is the deadline to get your application in at the clerk's office. We have those available. You can pick them up now. You can go ahead and be filing now. You do have to go through the process. It's all new with the KREF, uh, the Kentucky Registry of Election Finance. You have to file an application online with them and get approved and submit that with your application or candidacy. So make sure you're prepared to do that. It takes a few extra steps on your part, okay? So if you have questions about that, give us a call on that too. If you're wanting to register to vote, you've never registered before, the books will open back up the day after election. If you wanna change your party, again, the books open back up the day after the election. So feel free to do any of those things and, uh, we're happy to help you with those. You can do that by coming to the office. Uh, the mayor has some voter registration cards on hand here for K-City. Or you can just simply go online, govoteky.gov. Govoteky.gov. You can register to vote. Um, if you're, uh, sick and shut in and you wanna request a mail-in absentee ballot for, um, the fall, same website, govoteky.gov, okay? I asked if you had questions and I just kept talking. I'm sorry.
Uh, Helena, on that registration, um, oh, for register to vote or change parties, uh, what's the deadline on that?
So the deadline for the fall deadline, because the deadlines are tight right now.
For the fall, yes.
Ooh, that's a good question. I don't know. But it's on govoteky.gov. You can check it out there. I can look that up and call and tell you. I apologize that I didn't, I should've brought that calendar with me. It'll be, the books typically, let's see, they closed, it'll be a good thirty days from the election. That's for first-time registrations, okay? So make sure that if you are, have a young person in your family that's seventeen today, but they're gonna be eighteen on or before Election Day, they can vote if they've already registered. They should've already registered. They have to register to vote now. Um, even though they're not eighteen today, if they're gonna be eighteen on or before Election Day, they can register to vote. So they can vote in the general election. We've got some seventeen-year-olds that are gonna vote in the primary election for the first time because they will be eighteen on or before Election Day. It's pretty cool. I'd love to see young people get out and register to vote. Okay, anybody else have questions?
Have you all ever thought on a ballot at the bottom, putting none of the above?
I never thought of that. But I don't get to add things to the ballot. None of the above. I think that's when you just skip. Just skip that category if you don't wanna vote for anybody. We do have new election equipment. You're gonna, um, see that. It's super user-friendly. You're just basically gonna get your ballot like normal. Uh, I believe we have eleven different ballot faces in Baren County this time. So again, all those ballot faces will be at, no, so no matter where you vote, your home precinct ballot will be at that location. So, uh, you'll mark your ballot and scan in the machine. It just looks a little bit different. Uh, our, um, special needs equipment, um, is now one-hundred percent paper equipment. Before it stored the data of the voter and if we had a recount, then we had to bring in our, our vendor and they had to download it and print it off. Now it actually prints a ballot for that individual that votes on that special machine. And they can go scan it into the scanner just like every other, uh, voter in Baren County. That's part of the, the, the requirements of Kentucky law, the, the KREFs that change for voting. So we're ahead of the game. Pretty excited. Any questions? Thank you.
What about, uh, what is the steps on register, I mean, to run?
To run? Just come to the office and pick up an application and we'll go over that with you. And, uh, we have, um, the process, like everything printed out. Though, there's one additional process that typically you just fill out a sheet and we would turn it in for you to the Kentucky Registry of Election Finance. Today you have to actually go on to their website and e-file that application.
You gonna do that first?
Before you turn your application in. You can go ahead and pick up your, your packet.
Right.
And then go ahead and go online and e-file, and then you'll print that off and bring it back with your application.
And that's when we pay you?
Yes, and then we'll take your money.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you all so much. Thanks for your time. Appreciate you.
Any other questions? Either up here or from the audience, any questions for Helena?
Thank you, Helena.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Uh, good information for y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If y'all don't mind, I'm gonna go back. We're open till six o'clock on Monday night, so I'm gonna go back and, uh, and work with the girls.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all. If anybody has questions, you call me. We'll, we'll get you through it, okay? And pick up your packets if you wanna run for office. All right, you can also download them online. You can download them online, yes, thank you. Okay, all that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, um, old business or unfinished business? Uh, ARPA, and we had, uh, some, uh, good discussions about ARPA funds at our last meeting. And, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee, I know, have, uh, met at least three times. And have done some work on this, and I think, uh, I'm gonna let them present thoughts, ideas, uh, at this time.
Yeah, it's a lot. So, because we're talking about ARPA, so ARPA is the American Relief Plan Act that came about during COVID. Just to let you guys know, the city is set to receive, um, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-five, which sixty-two-hundred, a little over sixty-two-hundred, has been set aside for, I believe it's Brad, right, for council administrative support? And forty-four thousand for police vehicles. So Budget Committee met three times, uh, in regards to this matter. Um, and these are suggestions. Some of these I feel need to, we, we feel that they need to be voted on tonight. But, um, nothing has to be allocated till 2024 and it has to be spent till 2026. So the first thing, kind of went from, um, pay raises, but we jumped to, um, retention pay. Um, so we talked about, uh, offering retention pay for the seventeen long-term employees. I think it's seventeen, it might be more. I don't have a total. Uh, and the amount of twenty-five-hundred dollars to be made in two payments, uh, twelve-fifty, uh, one now and one a week before Thanksgiving. And then for the, I think it's three paid employees that were hired before or after, do retention pay of five-hundred a given, a week before Thanksgiving. Um, and then road improvements, and I'll just start with this, and then Mayor, you'll jump in on this too. Do you wanna go down the list of all of these or should we?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
It's a lot. Okay. We had a lot to discuss. So road improvements, obviously we need road improvements. Um, the main focus is on Sanders, Gontz, and Grinstead Mill Road. Um, the mayor's been meeting with engineers and the state to get estimates and has done a great job on that. Uh, for Sanders, the estimate is around nine thousand. Gontz is around twenty, of which CEA will be providing, providing half of that. And then, um, Grinstead Mill Road, I'll let you talk about that one.
Uh, we were very fortunate. I talked to Mr. Doug Taylor, who is the, um, Rural Municipal Road Aid Representative. Uh, very, very nice gentleman. I talked to him at a Brad meeting two weeks ago. He was up here last Tuesday. Also, Richard Tuck with American Engineers were, were, they were here at the same time. And so, um, we met, uh, Jennifer, uh, we, as always, there was paperwork to do. American Engineers got us engineering plans and all of that. Friday, we sent it in. We got word today, we, uh, possibly can receive up to sixty-two thousand dollars to, uh, help us fix that hole in Grinstead Mill Road. And I'm sure, uh, a lot, that will make a lot of people happy, all of us, because we all, that road is heavily traveled. Three different districts, school districts run buses, we got milk trucks, we got, it's, so we're really pleased that we can finally, hopefully, see some light at the end of that tunnel with our hole out on Grinstead Mill Road, and it is huge, so, yeah.
So we talked about with the improvements that can be made, even though like so far our commitment is around thirty-five, give or take, thousand dollars, allotting seventy-five for the roads. That's what we talked about, right?
Yes.
Uh, seventy-five thousand for the roads, even though, so like the extra, plus the extra road aid, which is forty-two, so that's around eighty thousand, can be saved for any of our other twenty-some roads we have in the city and sidewalks. So, we're talk, so, so far we have retention pay and road improvements of seventy-five. And then we discussed the cemetery and suggesting allotting fifty thousand to the cemetery board to be spent on cutting in new roads and infrastructure that the board sees needed. The estimate for the new roads to be cut in was nine thousand, and I believe that he said it could be done.
Let me back up on that.
Um, all right.
Uh, sorry.
No, it's fine.
That, that figure was to blacktop the existing gravel roads that we still have in the cemetery. And I don't have a price on cutting the ones in the new part. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. That's great. That's, but that, if that, they were, I think they said they could do that by memorial, if that was decided on pretty quickly.
Uh, yeah, the Cemetery Commission will be meeting Thursday, and he said if I would let him know by Friday, he could have those roads blacktopped by Memorial Day.
And then the next is the garbage truck. There's a lot of things, y'all, in here. We need a new garbage truck. The current price is two-hundred-and-fif, two-hundred-and-five thousand or two-hundred-and-two. We are going back and forth.
Well, my last report late this afternoon, I got from Greg, uh, Kinslow, a, a mechanic, and myself have been dueing with him. The last price we got, um, was two-hundred-and-two thousand six hundred dollars.
Um, so then the possibility of a trade-in of our old one could be around forty. And the question here is, and we talked about it in budget, is do we allot, uh, only enough for a down payment and finance the rest, um, at four percent or more? Our last one that we did that, I think we paid interest of a little over thirteen thousand. Or do we make a larger payment, or do we pay for the whole thing? And if we pay for the whole thing, one thing that we discussed, and I'm just throwing it out there, is, you know, we've never raised any of our garbage prices here since before the mayor has been in office. And we're still about a hundred, a dollar fifty less than the city. So like one thing that we need to, when we go to budget, is maybe look at like a small increase in tax, in, uh, not taxes, in, um, trash, garbage pickup. With our landfill and the, and the fuel prices right now, we're not making near as much off garbage. And if we have to buy a two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar truck, you know, twenty-five cents could help us a lot, but still offer the, the, um, discount for the seniors, so.
May I insert something? I said, I don't mean to keep interrupting.
No, you're fine.
To give you a comparison, we bought, uh, our last garbage truck two and a half years ago, a hundred and fifty-four thousand. That's how much they've gone up, which, that's not, any of you business folks know how, that's. So, right now we're at two-hundred-and-two on that, basically the same truck.
And we still offer brush removal for free in the city too, is another thing, you know, so.
Leaf pickup?
Yeah, leaf pickup. So there's the garbage truck. And for community, there was a discussion of a community bus that would run from Monday through Friday, from nine AM to three PM. Uh, there's been talks of dividing this expense between the Convention Center and Horse Cave. Uh, but we would need to look into, Bobby, the legalities and subcontracting of this work out and then talk about insurance with KLC. The mayor has been talking to another city that does this and how they hire retirees and it's subcontracted out. And they're actually, it was so successful, they're doing two buses. So we have a lot of people that need transportation here to prescription centers and grocery and.
Doctors, former.
Things of that nature. Um, fire department, we, we, we touched on it, but the county has given the K-C fire department twenty thousand and I think three thousand to be spent, but I think that we need to sit down and talk to you guys about, like, monies that you would forecast, forecast needing in the future, so that we could like set aside, because I don't know how old the equipment would be. And, you know, if seventeen thousand left is not enough, then maybe there's something that we can allocate from this budget too. We just haven't sat down and talked to you guys. Um, so that's what for, that was just immediate. We can talk on the pay raises after that. But I think that, you know, as far as like the reason why we're doing budget right now for pay raises, to try and fit that in there. But this was immediate for ARPA. So the things to vote on would be retention pay, road improvements, cemetery, and garbage truck possibly, because you're saying that there's only two available, and if not.
Well, the thing on the garbage truck, um, we've talked to three different companies. Um, one of them, the only thing any of them have on their lots. This one company had two, uh, twenty-five yard, which is a tandem, a lot bigger than what we normally use. And after talking with them and everything, uh, we sort of concentrated on staying with the twenty yard with our drivers and, uh, extra, probably extra upkeep and those type of things, so. Uh, but as far as the twenty yard, the three companies we've talked to does not even have one. The earliest delivery that we got from any of the three would be December. Now, with that said, um, the monies, you know, the money spent on the garbage truck would not be till first of twenty-three possibly. Um, I talked, we got, I've talked to Greg, uh, yeah, it's beginning to have some issues, but, uh, he thinks, you know, we would be okay barring any total catastrophe with it or whatever. But we really don't have any chores. Uh, two of the companies were like, uh, one of them was March of next year. One was Gi, uh, January, February. So that's where we're at on that. And as far as spending that money, we're still looking at going into this year or first of next year possibly even. So.
So I don't know if we need to do this, these motions separately or?
Well, we can't authorize it expended during this month without a budget ordinance, uh, revision, which will take two readings and has to be in writing. If you all will authorize the budget to be amended just by a motion here.
Bobby, let, let me ask a question. I'm just asking, because I don't know. Now, what we're talking about spending on these is the ARPA money.
I know.
It still has to be within the budget.
Yeah, it's gotta be within, in the budget, all the money, wherever it comes from, has to be.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just asking for clarification.
All right.
Yeah.
Because it was allocated into the budget, so it has to be within that. Was cares money like that too? What about cares money? Was that like that too? Because I don't remember, like the cares money, is that supposed to be within?
I, I don't even remember the cares money.
That will, um, that will be in our amended budget.
Yeah, we, we need to do that properly. We, we have had a, had a practice here of just little, um, budget amendments that didn't amount to much.
Right.
Of just waiting till the end of the year and finally doing an amended budget. But when you're talking about six-hundred thousand dollars, that's, uh, that's a little over proposition.
Yeah.
It needs to be done with a budget in advance. If you authorize it, while the people know it's coming, it'll just take a few, probably one meet, a couple of meetings to get it done, especially over regular.
And, uh, Letitia and Denny and Steve, in these meetings, and like I say, um, they had some tremendous discussions and, you know, on, on all of this. Um, I guess, um, I guess for the Finance Committee and, like I say, they've met three times, there's been a lot of time on this, just to come up with. Um, so as far as an actual vote, one thing on the garbage truck. Um, and I don't know how we go about doing this. All of these companies and people who are needing them, well, I'll just give you one example. They, this same truck that you're talking about, they have three other salesmen who also are talking with people on that. Um, I don't know how we go about doing it and all the legal aspects, but that is one thing that pretty quick, like this week, they need to know something in order to hold that truck for us. And I don't know how we go about doing something like that.
Well, I, this is what I will recommend, that we go ahead and make a motion that the, that a budget amendment be prepared to provide for these things. That will, and that the mayor be authorized to go ahead and, uh, obligate the city to the purchase of the, uh, truck. You, you don't have to tell them you're gonna pay for it or not.
Well, yeah, and, and that's understood. They don't expect anything until delivered, whenever that might be. Um, and, uh, well, one other thing on that, I won't know the exact, it's gonna be, well, I said this week, next week, uh, when you're dealing with corporate, you have a different group that does everything. So the group that is to look at ours and tell us how much they're gonna give us for ours, uh, won't be till next week. So as far as, and in no way will I, uh, make any kind of, uh, commitment until we know what we're gonna get out of ours. Uh, our last one, we got forty thousand, wasn't it, two and a half years ago? We, we, they gave us forty thousand for what we traded in, so. I don't think it'd be wise at all to make any commitment until we know exactly what we're gonna be able to get out of ours to bring that two-hundred thousand down to one-hundred and fifty or whatever.
So on the, so for the garbage truck, if we paid for it in full and if we got forty grand, that's a hundred and sixty-two thousand. And then if we amended the budget for retention pay, road improvements, and cemetery, that's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So you're looking at three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars of allotment. All right.
Which is basically these, of course, that, that's on a two-year or two-budget year cycle. So that basically would use up our this year's, and we will be looking into the next allotment, so to speak.
Yeah.
The six-hundred-and-twenty-eight, I think it was, comes in two different, one of the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and then the other will be here in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year, as far as us actually receiving that money. So, uh, what's the feeling, the council?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
When are we, when are we gonna be paying all this?
Well, it's like the garbage, just like on the garbage truck. It will, we will not pay a penny until it's delivered.
Well, then it would be in our new budget.
Yeah, that would be in our new budget.
And I'm here ready to amend the budget for the year, so we can do that all together, because it, you know, do that in June with the.
Oh, if you're not gonna spend any of the money before June the thirtieth, fine. But I understood you're gonna spend nine thousand dollars right away for cemetery.
Or fifty, fifty.
Actually, actually.
Just allot it.
Again, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong. The budget that just recommended allotted to the Cemetery Commission, who actually, by ordinance, runs the cemetery. Um, so we give them, um, they in turn, which basically the same thing, it's still city money, although they're, they're. although they're, they're working on that. So, yeah, that would be nine thousand, um, yeah.
You want it before the thirtieth of May is the way I understood it.
Well, he just said he could get that done if, if we so desired before then.
If, if it doesn't have, any of it doesn't have to be paid out till June the thirtieth, then just put it in the new budget.
Yeah, and that's totally up to the council.
That'd be the best thing to do.
The same way with the, the work on Sanders Street in Galtz, he said he could start, which I about fell over. He could get to that either the last week of May or the first of June. So that would be another, that would be another expenditure in this budget.
So do we have an, or should we make a motion so we can discuss this? Can, can we do that?
Sure.
Make a motion?
To, to allocate to the garbage truck a hundred and...
Six, or a hundred and sixty-two thousand, but, yeah.
You don't have to spend it, just allocate it.
Yeah, right.
The fifty thousand dollars to the Cave City Cemetery Commission, seventy-five thousand dollars to the city road fund and...
Alright, I mean, we don't have an exact total, but around forty-four thousand.
We could, uh, okay, okay, thank you, Bobby. So we can actually vote to allocate that dollar of mail at some point between now and twenty-sixth.
Yeah. So I'll make that motion. I just want to discuss it.
Okay, I have a motion, if I'm, if I'm wrong, to allocate, uh, said, uh, funding to these different, uh, projects.
And I'll second it.
And we have a second, does that cover it, Bobby?
I think so. Jennifer, you got the figures down?
No, but I'll get them. I got them on the recorder.
Alright.
Um, so that's, uh, how much was it on garbage?
A hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars.
That's it?
Well, that's, that's bigger than if we can, well, yeah, we can...
So I would just question, if we wanted to, if any of this wanted to be waited on and done in the new budget?
Right.
Then do we have enough money to give, you know, to do the cemetery now and general fund to get the road started before Memorial?
As far as that goes, uh, in my opinion, you could, although you're allotting fifty, is that correct?
We just allot forty.
And the big thing on this, some of this work at cemetery for Memorial Day, where you have a lot of people up there that weekend. And I think any improvements and that type of thing we could get done for the people to see would be a enhance, enhancement for all of us. That was the reason they were shooting.
The cemetery has money. We could go ahead and spend that nine thousand.
Very good point.
The city could reimburse the cemetery fund.
Very good point, Denny, thank you.
Should it work?
And like I say, that's the reason they were talking about, they could have it done by Ma- by Memorial Day just for the, you know, we all, that's the big weekend at cemetery. And that would just, you know, like I say, enhance the appearance of our cemetery. But, yeah, that's a very good point, Denny. Any other concerns, questions, whatever, um, let me, let me redo this. A hundred and sixty-two for a garbage truck, um, seventy-five thousand for roads, um, fifty thousand for cemetery.
Retention pay was the...
Yeah, retention pay.
Don't have a total on it, a, a real total.
Well, you can go ahead and save forty-four thousand because you're not going to need all of it before June the thirtieth. And then by the time you do the new budget, everything will have, have gelled so that you know exactly what you're doing.
And Denny made a good point, we, I don't know, I have talked to Jennifer, I don't know, I may be talking out of kelp, but we might could even do that with the immediate, uh, immediate retention pay. And then take that, whatever that works out to be from that amount.
Yeah, because we were only going to have it for the first.
Yeah, right.
I think my big concern was the garbage truck and that, just what's the smartest thing to do on that? And I think Bobby, you could help maybe with that, you know, as far as payment or full payment or not and having the interest. Is it better to stay liquid?
I've always had the idea, if you had the money to pay for something, pay for it. And then you don't have to worry about making that payment.
Jennifer and I talked the other day on our past, uh, we got two and a half years ago. This July, we will have two more years of paying on that. And the total interest paid on, uh, that was thirteen thousand and something.
It will be once we pay them thirteen thousand.
So, but that's totally, uh, you know, up to you all as well. Any other questions, comments, concerns on this motion? Not, uh, roll call vote, please.
Kevin Houghton.
Yes.
Mike Houghton.
Yes.
Liz, Letitia Klein.
Yes.
Denny Doyle.
Yes.
Steve Peggio.
Yes.
Beverly Ford.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, in your business, we have a couple of resolutions.
Can we stay with ARPA a minute?
Yes.
That was just a motion to, to deal with the allocation. But I still didn't hear anything on what I brought up at our last meeting about helping the people of Cave City. Now, uh, Bobby sent me something, uh, concerning maybe childcare so a person could get back to work. I've talked with the, uh, people at the daycare, uh, about that situation. But additionally, I, I think that at the last council meeting, what I asked was, uh, money to be allocated to help the people of Cave City. And the reason why I keep putting an emphasis on that is because of the CARES money. I finally got an information request that I put in for, and it shows where all that money went in our, in our finances, in city finances. But I, I don't think all of it was reported. We got two hundred and forty-nine thousand, right? So I only got a report on it.
For payroll only, it was very, very restrictive what you had to do with it.
I got a report for a hundred and seventy-six thousand, so I don't know what happened to the other. But I do know that if you go to the website and you look, you can also use that it was to be used to help people. It was to be used to help communities. It was to be used for parks so that people could get out because they've been in so long for COVID. And, and there was a whole list of things that it could be used for. And so I don't know whatever happened with CARES money. I never saw it in the budget anywhere. So I do know that some parts of it we don't know. But my concern is the request that I made with ARPA funding, that we do something to help the people of Cave City. And I still have the same request on the table. It hasn't changed. And, you know, that bus might be a good thing, but I'm talking about immediate relief for people in Cave City. In the city limits of Cave City.
And I don't want to speak for the committee, this, this, there was discussion on, on, on this.
It's fine, but I didn't hear a report add on.
Right, and, and I apologize. Uh, and committee, I'm not speaking for you all. Uh, matter of fact, uh, you want to address that, the discussion on that?
Uh, yeah, we talked some about that and we talked about, we, um, I don't know what that was called in December when we got a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
And no one used it, which it wasn't promoted to be used, but, um, for utilities. But there are so many programs out there for utilities and we're trying to think of some long-term, something that like longer term that we can implement in the city to help, like, a larger group, like with... And that's where the community bus came into play, is that this may be a thing where we can help with assistance for transportation. And that's, I mean, that's where we, that's what we came up with for that. But just because there's quite a bit, there was quite a bit of assistance for utilities and they weren't used. But the CARES money is, is the thing because it, I don't have the paper here with me, I must have left it in my desk, but it was specific, but it was for things that were not allocated in the budget. So if we had to hire someone for, um, to like man, uh, the hospital because COVID, and people were trying to, you know, because of the different people trying to get in there and whatnot, then we would pay for that. But there is a lot of cities that utilize that to help, actually help the community. It was any expense, I mean, look at the county, the county used it, part of it. I'm just saying it wasn't as strict as you say. I mean, that, there's just, that was not just an example of what forty thousand dollars it was.
It could be used for that because of community.
Yeah, it was in outdoor projects.
Children about to end. And, and that's what that money was about, when you go back and look at it. It's, it's out there for anybody to look at it. But also, ARPA money is supposed to have been, we received money in the city of Cave City to give a immediate relief to help people, and we chose not to, bottom line. And, uh, you know, and if I've got it mixed up, I'll call back, uh, up to, uh, KLC and C, but now I, I'm pretty sure that, I was told some of this money could be used for relief to help people. That's all I'm concerned with, is that we do the right thing rather than being greedy and we're putting it all in our budget and we're doing that, you know. Then if we amended the budget that much, that we took the money from CARES money and we did payroll with it, where did the amendment come in the budget? Did the budget go up? You know, because we use, we didn't have to use that money. Okay, you know, it's checks and balances.
Um, yes, it was in the budget, uh, on the ARPA money and, and helping our people. And here again, I know, right, wrong, whatever, I think a little bit different. We're all about helping people, that's what we're here for. We do that on a daily basis in some form or fashion. And Letitia touched on it, we had a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we were the conduit. You had to have a nonprofit organization to actually admin- administer that. Both the county and across the state. Most people sent all the money back. Because if you didn't use it, you had to send it back anyway. The, uh, and the group that we chose to do that at the time, uh, I forgot, it was very few if any requests. And the county did the same thing, I don't know their dollar amount or whatever. Um, because, and there's always people that need help, don't get me wrong. But during that time, there were so many, uh, other organizations and that helped people. Another thing with what we sent back, that came out last December, long, long after a lot of the needs were already met. Um, but, and I'm not opposed, you know, it's child's decision. I, I do agree with, um, and, and this, uh, this committee discussed it. I had spoken with the mayor down at Morgantown, Mayor Phelps. And, uh, they started a bus, a city bus last year. Matter of fact, ran, uh, Mayor Curry and I both, we were all on a, uh, discussion together. And, um, I just feel like, and, and there's a lot to be worked out. I'm not saying, I know, we don't have all the answers, it was just discussed as a possibility of a way of helping our people. Uh, because we have people all the time that don't have transportation into a doctor's department or their grocery store or to go get their medicine, whatever the need may be. And, uh, as Letitia mentioned before, that, I think it was in agreement that with that committee, that that would be a good way, if, if we could work it out and get all of the, uh, particulars worked out of a possibility of using some of this money to help our people. Uh, and that's still open for whatever ideas anyone may have. That's probably not something unless you all want to, to decide on here tonight. But it's not that, um... One thing I will say, if we're going to help somebody with utility bills or some type of bills, uh, they're going to be paid directly, I mean, this, this is my opinion.
Well, absolutely, you're not giving anybody the money.
You're not handing anybody money to go pay them, period.
You don't have people money anymore. But you got people who, uh, make just a little bit more than, uh, what the average person makes, but they can't afford daycare because it's running thirty-four dollars a day per child that you could assist so they could get back to work. You know, uh, Bobby sent me that and when I investigated it, there are people out there who just don't go back to work, they can't afford it.
And here again, and I agree with that very much though, yes.
They're not eligible for the stipend that the state gives.
Just my...
And we maybe couldn't pay all the daycare, but you could pay a percentage of it to still help people.
Even on, even on that, here again, this is my opinion. You're going to have a job and you're going to show us and you're going to check with that importer that you're going to work before you get, even get there.
Okay, I mean, we're taking care of the dead, we take care of the living.
I like the idea of childcare, Beverly, because it puts people...
Yeah.
I like the idea of childcare because it ensures, it puts people back in the workforce.
Oh, definitely.
When he said that, I immediately looked into it because I thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, and I think we need to do some incentives to get people out there working, whereas if we're kind of just handing out, sometimes it's not an incentive to go back to work.
And that's why I said what I did.
And childcare and our community bus could help.
You know, don't just tell us you're going to work, you need proof of that. Okay, any further discussion? But that's, that's...
No, I just want the minutes to show that we did have the discussion.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, we have a couple of resolutions. First one is the FEMA designation of applicant agent. Uh, Bobby, could you do that for us?
Yes, sir, this is Resolution twenty-two oh two-two five nine. Uh, this resolution resolves that the mayor be designated as the agent to make all applications for FEMA or, uh, disaster related.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
I have to motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, second, any discussion?
What do we do with the FEMA money that we got?
We, we don't have any yet.
I'm just saying, we've had, like, we, I just know that it hurt some people, I just didn't know where it's...
I don't know, we got money for the tornado, people donated, I don't know where that went.
I saw that, I saw five hundred and something in the budget, but I don't know if it's, I don't think it's been used.
Donated to who?
To here, to help people with.
We still have it, nobody ever came forward needing help to help the city on. Do you know someone specifically that needs it?
Hey, I talked before, I read about different people that we could have helped with that. Because that's what people gave it to us for, was to help those people immediately out there and...
I mean, we did use it, uh, some of it, but not all of it.
That'd be something we'll definitely look into, Beverly. And I apologize, as you know, I was, during all of that time, I was getting sliced open.
I asked him to help the elderly out there because those were the people that, uh, got hit pretty good, as well as the people in trailer park. And he told me he would follow through with it on two different occasions. And I asked those people out there and they said, nobody said anything to me.
Uh, make a note of that, Jennifer. Uh, I will, uh, personally check on that, Beverly.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
So how does the FEMA money get, what are we getting and how, how is it supposed to be used? I just don't understand, I'm sorry.
This is for the cleaning up after the tornado, uh, where we used our trucks and people to cut the trees down and clear the way and block the road when it first happened and all that stuff. And it doesn't have any restrictions on it.
It's a reimbursement.
Yeah, so we calculate...
It's basically, basically a reimbursement for our tornado expenses.
Yeah, I remember there was like keeping track of like the hours that were being used and the fuel and the mileage. So it's reimbursement for that.
Yeah, very stringent, uh, very, um, yeah, um, those records.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, uh, roll call vote, please.
Beverly Ford?
Yes.
Steve Peggio?
Yes.
Denny Doyle?
Yes.
Letitia Klein?
Yes.
Mike Houghton?
Yes.
Kevin Houghton?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Another resolution, uh, pertaining to our road aid agreement?
This is the annual road aid resolution that we have adopted for the last twenty-five years. It's the very same language and it's resolved that the city does hereby apply to receive the municipal aid program. to receive the municipal aid program, uh, funds. The chief executive order officer of the city is authorized to sign and contract the, uh, with the state to administer the funds in accordance with state law.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Uh, one thing I do want to mention and probably, and, uh, I'm witness upon it as I should have been. This, uh, recent, uh, monies that we got to help us with our home loan, there's a three percent, I think, in it, emergency or something, that they actually keep in our road aid funding, not funny, our road aid funding. And that three percent has actually paid off because that's where this money came from, that three percent emergency thing. So that does come into use from time to time. I would entertain a motion to, uh, uh, approve this resolution. I'll make the motion.
Second.
I would, okay, thank you. Any discussion, questions?
Forty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-four eighteen is what we're set to get for road aid.
Yeah, whatever's.
Okay.
Yeah. And like I say, I've never really considered that three percent until now, but that's where this money we're getting now is coming from. Any other? If not, roll call vote, please.
Beverly Ford.
Yes.
Steve Pedego.
Yes.
Denny Doyle.
Yes.
Patricia Klein.
Yes, Mike Houghton.
Yes.
Kevin Houghton.
Yes. Thank you. Um, our reports, um, by. Oh, excuse me. Um, we have, we have a gentleman that I'd like to, uh, like counsel approval if possible. Uh, we had, uh, one person resign from our code enforcement board, Adam Russell. And I've talked to him and I think a very, very good, uh, be very good on recovery enforcement. And I would like to appoint Jeff Lawson to that position on the code enforcement board. And I've spoken with him and he has agreed to fill that position. And I would entertain a motion for that approval. I'll make that motion. Second, we have a motion second. Any discussion?
Who is dealing with this? He did.
He runs the campaign.
I, that's what I'm trying to find out. I'm trying to tell you.
He's usually here at council.
Yeah, he's not here today because he emailed me this morning.
Thank you.
He emailed me this morning and he has been waiting for a root canal and they had a cancellation, so he, that's why he's not here tonight. He had a root canal this afternoon, so.
Just for the young kid.
Is any, uh.
Where's on him? This is on me.
Any, any other discussion?
I can also make a word, Bobby.
Okay. Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Uh, fire department, uh, yeah, there's chief back there. You got anything other than what's in our packet?
I'm good.
Everything going good, fire department?
Yeah, right now.
Okay, got, got paid money, don't need no more or nothing.
I will, we all.
Yeah, okay.
We're coming, we're gonna be talking.
Uh, police department, chief, uh, have anything other than what's in our reports? Um, I will, uh, fill in on some of, uh, these reports. Uh, Robert and his wife, uh, has, uh, really been struggling for several months. I've been trying my best to take care of some of this. Public Works is doing well. Uh, our new employees, uh, uh, are, uh, doing really, really good so far. Um, uh, economic development, um, our industrial park work is moving along. They have started, uh, some work at the, uh, new bank, um, the, uh, I'm sure this box I'm leaving out, but anyway. Um, any other, uh, council committee reports from anyone?
Let me give you all a heads up because I've asked Jennifer to put this in the budget. We've been really, really lucky that we have never had a fire break out. And this building was a firehouse of the senior citizens building. And we have never had a monitored fire alarm system for these three buildings. And I've asked her to put that in the budget and I can't give you a figure right now. But we need to have a monitored fire alarm system because if the firehouse catches fire and burns down, we aren't gonna be able to service the citizens. All three buildings are so close together, even any one of them catch fire, we've had. Just want to give you a heads up. That's gonna be in the new budget. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Uh, anyone else? If not, I have a few things here I want to mention. Uh, there will be a cemetery public meeting on May the nineteenth. Just to update citizens, uh, who may have questions or whatever concerning the cemetery, that will be May nineteenth at six o'clock at the community building. Um, just want to kudos to the Cars and Coffee, uh, in spite of the weather, it was successful, um, this past Saturday. Uh, a great event, um, had what, close to two hundred cars maybe this week?
I think so, yeah.
Even, even with the weather and everything, so, uh, kudos to those folks. The next one will be June the fourth, I believe it is. Um, I have a card I would like to read. Uh, very nice card. Um, with deep appreciation. Uh, the kindness, support and love you all shown during our time of loss. Thank you all. Nancy Klein and family from, uh, our employee who we, we miss, will always miss Ronnie. So just wanted to share that with you all. Um, okay, I'm covering road work, okay. Uh, our June meeting, I just want to put this out there. Our June meeting, the regular schedule will be June the thirteenth. KLC has a, uh, seminars, no, it's not seminars, it's learning. Uh, covers alcohol one day, uh, city government one day and economic development one day. A regular meeting is scheduled for the thirteenth. Those begin on the fourteenth. And I know I'm registered, some of my other folks are registered. Uh, and by the way, any other council members, not too late to register if you would like to. Just say, get y'all's thoughts. And also, Jennifer and I have talked, we're gonna try our very best to have, uh, first reading of the budget. We're probably needing to have two meetings in June anyway. So I'm just putting it out there. If we move, uh, one meeting to June the sixth, which would be the first Monday, we could have our first reading of the budget and whatever else we might need to do between now and then. And then another meeting on the third Monday, which would be June the twentieth. And these are just suggestions in order for any and everyone who wants to attend, and they are really good educational, uh, seminars.
Where are they gonna be?
Summit, I think is what they call it. Uh, there in Lexington.
Lexington.
Yeah. And I'm just putting that out there.
I mean, that's.
Yeah, I'll make it work.
You gotta go all three days?
Well, it's, I think the first day, the first day is on alcohol, the second day is on, uh, city government and the third day on economic development, I think, uh, for those of you that are registered. Does that sound right?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. And I'm just putting that out there. What's your thoughts or?
I'm not good on the twentieth of June. I won't be here. I'll be in vacation Bible school. But I, you know, one month you don't stop, no help. Keep moving on.
And, and I just threw those dates out. It doesn't have to be that day.
I'm just saying that, you know, I know I'm not available that day.
But you probably have, uh, if it's a vacation Bible school, you probably have it all that week.
Five to seven, uh-huh.
So, do we need to vote on changing the first meeting to the sixth?
Yes.
I'm gonna go to six. Well, welcome to heaven.
Is anybody, I mean, like I said, I just threw those dates out there. Hey, I'm, I'm counting, Bobby, whatever works for y'all, I'll make it work. Those are just suggestions. And I thought while we.
We're doing a budget. We're, it's budget, right?
Yeah.
So it's an important one. It's a very important.
Well, actually, that, that'd be first reading.
Yeah.
And then whatever date we come up with in June would be the second and final reading.
That budget needs to be done by end of June.
Yes. And I say, I just, those are some daytime suggestions. Or if you don't want to change the dollars, they're going to that, oh, get up at whenever it go. But those started like about seven hour time, maybe, on Tuesday morning. Do I hear any comments, suggestions? And the reason I'm bringing it up is because we're all together right now and we can work out something. And if there's no discussion.
We want to go with the sixth is the meeting until the thirteenth, right? First Monday and until the sixth.
Yeah.
Well, if we could zoom, I could totally make that one, but I can't make it, so.
Does it have to be on a Monday?
No, I'm saying those are just dates I, hey, that's dates I threw out there.
How about the seventh?
I'm not available that week at all.
Oh, a week.
Yeah, I adjusted my schedule so I could be here for my counseling.
Are you going to Lexington?
Yeah, I'm going to Lexington, but I'll drive if I need to, if I can't, I mean.
And if we don't want to change them, then the ones of us who are going to that, we'll just have to make it work. It's totally up to you all. And if there's no discussion or no whatever, I guess we're leaving it on regular day.
Okay.
Is that the consensus? I'm, is that the consensus I'm hearing or not hearing?
Is he gonna, if we gonna frame up, everybody's gonna be going to that plane up there, are we gonna have a meeting?
Well, if you meet near five, we'll just.
Well, and we'll just, we'll just have to. That'll be up, the, the ones who goes, those have to work it out. I was just trying to help out, you know, the ones that are going. Okay, then our meeting will be on regular, regular the thirteenth, I think it is in June. Uh, but we will still have to figure out another one in June sometime.
Um, yeah. We're, and budget needs to be.
Because budget has to be passed by July one.
Are you talking the whole week, uh?
I am. I am. I mean, you guys are welcome to.
Hey, as far as that goes, we can do our, our, uh, regular meeting, first reading and come back in on Thursday and do a second or something. That's up to you all. Anyway, anything else? Now your motion, we adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. And guess what? We didn't have a buzz. I'm talking about in the micro.